We have one. We'll call me to order. Clerk please call and roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammett?
Yes.
Ali?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, are there any changes or additions to the seat's agenda? Now we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of the meeting's minutes from the April 8 meeting. We have a resolution for appointment at the Water Department of West Davis and a resolution for appointment at Logan Apartments Dean Fleming and claims in the amount of Any questions regarding these consent agenda items? Not entertained or motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Revulinski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. There are no public appearances this evening scheduled, so we'll move on to our action items on resolutions and ordinances. The first is a resolution approving tax abatement application for 809 West Taylor.
Your Honor, I would request that we table this item.
Okay, this is the property that is still in the process of going through rezoning, so we should probably get it before this that is completed. And we will move on then to our next resolution, which is assessing unpaid service charges. And Darren, there were two properties. I think we referred both of these issues to the Water and Sewer Committee. Can you report on the discussions and recommendation?
Other than the conversation that I had with Kevin about this, one property owner was going to settle on theirs. I don't know what the disposition of the second one was from this point.
We'll be discussing that one item in closed session tonight.
Okay.
Okay, so can you say which of the two, whether it was Pappen or Phillips, that is still open?
It would be Pappen. I think it would be the studio.
Okay. Are the Pappens here this evening? Have you had an opportunity to meet with them? I mean, we have--
No, I had-- we had a meeting to discuss it, and neither of the two parties came to meeting.
Okay. And in your discussion, did you recommend that we proceed with the charges for the unpaid services?
Well, right-- yes, we did. Right at the end of the meeting, I was informed that the one party was going to propose a settlement for their portion of it. And that was the previous owner to the Phillips.
Okay. But so I'm just asking about with Pappen, is there action we want to take on that this evening?
We were interrupted at that point in the middle of the meeting, and we really didn't make a hard and fast choice on those. I wanted to be able to get with them and discuss it prior to, and maybe get them to come back to another subcommittee meeting is where I was hoping we could go with this. I know John said you want to-- do you have anything to add to it right now, John, or you want to wait for closed session?
I want to close session.
Okay. So I would ask that we table it then, Your Honor?
We'll take no action on this resolution as well.
Thank you.
We'll move to the resolution proposed for the parking on Southview Circle. And I know Public Safety-- I assume there was another meeting, is there a report on that, Jessica, that you can do this?
Sure. Basically, we met with the residents of Southview Circle and determined after a long conversation that most residents were in favor of moving the parking-- no parking on the west side of Southview Circle and no parking on the south side of Southview Drive. And Darren had surveyed the residents the weekend before, which was-- it went door-to-door, which was very good of him to do and kind of get a consensus. And then in the meeting, we also got the same consensus.
Are there any residents from Southview here this evening? And were you able to attend the other public hearing? And are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Darren, so--
Well, it's like all compromises. Some people are happy, some people aren't. Some people really didn't have an opinion one way or another and would settle for whatever was decided, so--
Okay. But certainly it's got a good public hearing.
It's been compromising. We've had a good response from the public.
Okay. So then the resolution that you have before you is to approve the no parking for the west side of Southview Circle and the south side of Southview Drive.
I would--
Motion--
Make that motion.
Moved by Hamilton to approve.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ledger Kaelin. Any other discussion? Now please call and roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Ali?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammett?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Next counsel, we have the second reading of our ordinance, which would prohibit the feeding of deer within the city limits. This is a public hearing, so I would declare the public hearing open at this time and ask if anyone wishes to speak for and against the ordinance. Seeing no interest, I'll close the public hearing and ask if there's any other further discussion in the council.
I just want to add that I did speak with our DNR depredation biologist, Greg Harris, on Friday. He came to town to look at the goose situation at Bonnefield Lake and asked him about this ordinance. He said this would help to discourage deer from coming into the city. Not quite as much as a deer-bellied hunting season would, but we'll have to--
All right. So entertain a motion then to approve the ordinance from the second or third reading. Moved by Halli.
Second.
Seconded by Ledger Kaelin. Please call and roll.
Halli?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revulinski?
No.
Hammett?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
No.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay, that's four to two. The motion passes to the third reading. Next counsel is the second reading of our ordinance for the rezoning of 2125 Libertyville Road from an R1 to a B2. And again, this is a property that has been newly annexed. The annexed land will come in as R1. The rezoning to B2 will reflect the use of the property, which will be business. This is a public hearing. I'll declare it open at this time and ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak for and against the proposed rezoning. Not seeing anyone wishing to speak, we'll close the public hearing. And counsel, are there any comments regarding this proposed rezoning? All right, then I entertain a motion to approve the ordinance 1099, rezoning 2125 Libertyville Road from R1 to B2. Second or third reading? Yes.
Could we request a waiving of the readings?
That's up to the council, so is this time-- Is there something--
Well, I just wanted to go ahead and be able to get it out of the way if we could, so if there was any need-- So-- Any problem to waiving the rules, I would move to suspend the rules for this.
Motion by Revulinski to suspend the rules and move the ordinance from the second to the final reading.
Second.
Seconded by Hamilton. Any other discussion?
Yeah, no one has objected to this particular rezoning, right? None that I've heard, no one else, or anything?
No, I think the last time we were here, we had some neighbors that were inquiring about the property and what was going to be going on there, but they didn't really have any issue with it. Just wanted to be up to date, and I think they were invited to come in and take a look at the plans. Have any of those followed up?
Not happened yet, but I'm not saying so. We'll be doing that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Now please call and roll.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hammett?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Halli?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Okay, and that does suspend the rules. Now I entertain a motion to pass this through its final reading.
I would move for that as well.
Moved by Revulinski.
Second.
Seconded by Rasmussen. Please call and roll.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Halli?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammett?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Your Honor. Next, we have our second reading for the rezoning of 809 West Taylor from R2 to R3 to accommodate the development of a apartment complex from the former Nelson Nursing Home. And this is also a public hearing. I will declare that open at this time, and I suspect there are some folks here who would like to speak on that. So if you would come to the podium and state your name and your address and briefly summarize your opposition or favor to the project, please.
Hello, my name is-- whoa, that's loud. My name is Jason Tietze. I live on 906 South 8th Street. With the City Council's permission, can we hand out some information that we've had to you? What we're handing out is a group of 18 letters that we've received on behalf of the neighborhood. There are roughly 30 houses that are directly affected to the rezoning there. That would be South 8th Street. And I believe it's the Taylors. I always--
Taylor.
I always give that up. And the majority, if not all of these letters, are against the rezoning project. What I'd like to do as far as my comments is just go ahead and read the letter that I included there. It's located with the address again, 906 South 8th Street. "Since my family moved to Fairfield eight years ago and we purchased our first home seven years ago, like all new home buyers, we looked to buy the neighborhood and closed down a home that needed a lot of work but was in a peaceful and well-kept area." We were told by-- and that's what we were told by our real estate agent. "For the past seven years, we have worked very hard to beautify and increase the value of our property and have been encouraged by the example of the neighborhood who in our authority do the same. I do not believe that the proposed rezoning is being made without intentions, but I'm very concerned with the haste of the decision and the lack of awareness and concern shown regarding the effects of the neighborhood. I know how good intentions can quickly turn into the bottom line of collecting the rent. The lack of ownership does not encourage keeping an area beautiful and well-kept. By allowing for 20-plus units on one property, you will increase the traffic flow and substantially change the dynamic of the neighborhood where many new families and children are located. This will affect the property values and the property desirability in the area. I'd like to remind the City Council that when 809 West Taylor property was purchased in the area, it was known to R2. By simply purchasing a property, there is never to be the expectation of a different zoning as that is a change that affects the neighborhood as a whole. Neighborhoods are specifically zoned to protect the value and dynamic of the area. I was not encouraged when I heard Mr. Koester use the term "market rate" last City Council meeting. This term merely refers to what government gives as the value of compensation that should be for the dwelling. I am aware that rental property owners receive subsidies from government to lower the cost of their mortgages and rehabilitate existing housing projects. In exchange, they are required to subsidize a certain percentage of apartments affordable for low and moderate income renters. Apartments can be subsidized and still termed "market rate apartments." After speaking to a friend who lived in one of these multi-family units where a percentage of the apartments were subsidized, she said it took four years before the entire unit was subsidized and the property value for that whole unit fell. I'd like to urge the City Council to give thought to these issues and take into account the wide ramifications to this proposed zoning. Please vote now if you're convinced. Thank you."
Anyone else?
And I live directly across from the Nelson Nursing Home, just by the luck. Just to reiterate, first of all, what Jason said, there's 22 homes on West Taylor and 18 homes on 8th Street. Those are the two streets that feed into Nelson Nursing Home. And when I spoke with the neighbors on Taylor, two-- only two out of the 22 homes, I was unable to reach those people personally. And so out of the 22-- out of the 20 homes, only two people were in favor of the rezoning. So that means 18 people were opposed, and a half of those people took the time to write letters. So I was going to spread out my ruler for dramatic effect because I live 26-- my property's 26 feet from the parking lot-- the front of the parking lot of the Nelson Nursing Home. And so that's about what-- from here to about there, and then about another, you know, I don't know, 20 feet to my living room. So from where you sit to that wall is front of the parking lot to my living room. So I just have some observations to make that I noticed about Nelson Nursing Home. And what I want to impress upon you is that that was a qualitatively different situation than having apartments would be. For example, traffic. I observe three shift changes a day. Each shift was about 15 cars, and it took about five to 10 minutes for the cars to leave, and the other employees to come in. And as soon as they got there, they went right inside the building. Everything was very orderly and limited in scope, and Sherry did a great job of having her employees behave. When you have, in contrast, a 24-unit apartment complex with close to 48 cars, people are coming in all day and all night, and you have-- if you have young families, you've got teenagers, boyfriends and girlfriends looking for each other, loud conversation, music in the parking lot, teenagers who are still learning to drive and speed up and down the street, which they do. So it's a completely different animal. The second thing is that the Nelson Nursing Home is 17,613 square feet. So if you subtract about 15% for hallways and common areas, that results in about 15,000 square feet for the apartments. Divide that by 24 apartments, you get 625 square feet. The market price for these apartments, just from having talked with people, is about $350. That's significantly less than what a home in the neighborhood rents for, which is about $700 to $800. So even if these apartments are not officially subsidized apartments or formally presented as quote "low-rent housing," the fact of the matter is that because the apartments are so small, the actual rent-- the rental cost will attract that segment of the market. And that is not what-- it's not appropriate for that neighborhood and that street. And in fact, nowhere else-- I looked at a map of the south part of town. You don't have R3 zoning in any other part of the south part of Fairfield where it's an apartment complex in the middle of a single-family neighborhood on a quiet dead-end street. What you do have is you've got three areas that are zoned R3, and they're all off of major thoroughfares. One is Libertyville Road, the second is off of Main Street, and the third is-- you come off of Main Street to Buchanan. And right next to that area is actually B2 zoning. So it's not in proportion to the rest of town to put apartments in this neighborhood. And then finally, I'd like to say that even though I live 26 feet from the parking lot, I never received a notice of this zoning proposal. And in fact, the only people that did receive notices were the ones where their backyards backed up adjacent right into the back of the Nelson Nursing Home. I just happened to find out about it by chance. I was shopping on a Tuesday and glanced at the Fairfield ledger and saw a picture of the Nelson Nursing Home and was sorry to find out that it had already passed the Planning and Zoning Commission in the City Council.
Had it passed the City Council--
Well, personally.
Bye. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? In favor?
My name is Bridgette Hinesworth. I'm not in favor of this as well. I live at 803 West Taylor, so my property is adjacent to the Nelson Nursing Home building. I agree with the comments made by the other folks, changing the dynamic of the neighborhood. There are several young families in that neighborhood that weren't there a few years ago, and there are a lot of children on the street-- near the street, and I just think the traffic being there would increase the danger for those children in the neighborhood. It would change the dynamic of the neighborhood greatly, so I endorse. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dawn Beckel. I live at 904 West Taylor, and I'm honestly not for or against this, and I don't really have enough information. I also was not notified and found out through the newspaper that it passed up the street. So I feel very strongly that something needs to be done with that building. I think that it does tell our property value of our homes to have a big building, which the lighting, the housing of the animals, schools, all that looks at. But at the same time, I'm very concerned about being low-end for housing. We just moved there in the end of October, beginning of November, and would not have bought it had we known it was going to be low-end for housing. So I'm more in favor of something a little more, you know, middle of the market, dice of quality. I think that's a lot of apartments to squeeze in there. My grandma's out of the Oaks. She's where 30 some of that. I have a much bigger home over at the Oaks. I don't-- But again, I don't know the whole story. I haven't been a part, and I'd like to give it a more important-- but I'm definitely in support of that.
Thank you. Yes, John?
I'm John Koester, one of the developers of the project. And I wanted to mention the fact that if we do have people who didn't get proper notification, we should back up, make sure that we're doing-- that people had proper notice.
Well, what occurred-- I did post this on Facebook earlier, but what occurred was when the property was pulled, there were two-- the parking lot is considered another piece of property. So the 200-foot was pulled from the property with the building on it, not both pieces of property. So about five to six houses right around in an area that you would think would have got a letter, did not. They would have, you know, the--
So back up and explain. I think you're assuming too much for your audience. Tell them how people are contacted and why some of the people may be further up Taylor or not. Good point.
Basically, we use the county GIS system, and we pull a 200-foot circular distance around the property lines of the properties in question for either a BOA occurrence or for any kind of zoning or planning effort that we're doing. That's how we analyze it. So when she pulled the property, basically she went within 200 feet-- or we went within 200 feet of the property within the building is on, not including the property where the parking lot is on. So that made us skip out about five people in the general area. So that's how that did occur. It did occur. That's how it occurred. We certainly apologize for that.
So then some of the people might have been outside of that 200-foot range. We don't want you to feel that you were not notified intentionally. It's just five to six property--
What do we do at this point?
Well, I think at this point, everyone who needs to be aware of it is-- has been made aware of it. We've had one reading already. We had a Planning Commission meeting, and then we had the other reading. We could certainly table tonight and, you know, have more discussion at the next council meeting of it.
I don't know whether-- I don't know whether this is-- we're going back to planning and zoning though at this point. I mean, I think we've gotten this this far. We should resolve what we can.
We were going to suggest, Your Honor, that we go to the Property Subcommittee and discuss it in Property Subcommittee again before we're going to get forward.
Okay. John, can you speak about your project?
Sure.
Because is everything that we're hearing about accurate? Would you--
No.
Well, and I think that's important, but I think that that's part of the information that people need to hear about what is the proposed project. And they may be against anything in that respect, but it's just make sure we have good information--
Some of the details-- We did meet with our architect a week or so ago, and after looking at the building, it looks like 19 is the maximum number of units that we can get in the building. And that's because we need-- after doing some surveying, potential tenants, a lot of them wanted two-bedroom apartments. So to get those two-bedroom apartments, we've got--
And the initial number?
I think I had said up to 24, but we weren't sure until we saw the architect. And so at this point, it's still not set in stone, but we're looking at 19 as the number he thought we could get. And so the market rate is a term that property owners use. It doesn't mean low income. The rents that we had in mind were 500 for the one-bedrooms and 700 for the two-bedrooms. So it's not $350, so-- Betty Howell, one of my other partners, is here with me tonight. Betty, if you could say a few words.
Also, just to clarify the issue about subsidy. My understanding is you have to be a-- you have to meet a certain government standard to qualify for subsidy. Is that the case in every situation? Or are there-- or could someone rent from you and get a subsidy to do so?
We have discussed the possibility of subsidizing the employee subsidy grant. So we haven't decided whether that--
But that's in-house. That's private. That's not a--
It's not a public subsidy. Right. So one of our ideas in initiating this project is Sunnybrook's inability to find employees who could live in Fairfield and work in our programs. And Betty is the founder-- one of the co-founders of Sunnybrook, and she has a lot of good employees, and I think she wants to say a few words about what those potential tenants are like.
We come up with this idea because Sunnybrook, just like any other nursing field, employs a lot of single moms. Most of the employees have children that are 3, 2, 6 years old. And I can't tell you how many times I've been in an employee's home, and it's been absolutely horrendous to see what they're living in and the filthiness that their children are calling on the carpet with. So with good intentions to breed quality employees, to provide them a clean, wonderful place to live, a clean environment for their small children, so that they can come to work and they can feel good about themselves and take care of our frail elderly, that's our intentions. The project would have an onsite manager. There will be expectations set with people that will be living in these apartments. They have to meet those expectations. So it's our desire to not only provide housing for single moms with young kids, but to provide better care for our employees and our elderly. That's our intentions.
If I could just-- The employees that Betty hires are required to go through background checks, criminal background checks, checks on whether they are on the dependent child or adult registry. And so we have really good employees, and we think they deserve the right to live in the community where they work. And that's the impetus to do this, is that if you're trying to better yourself in life, if you're working hard and you're playing by the rules, you have a right to live in the community. And that's-- we're trying to assist with that. I have a question. About how many of the 19 units do you think would be used by your employees?
I think all of them.
All of them?
Yeah. We did a little bit of a survey-- We did a little bit of a survey in our long-term care and in our assisted living, and they're, they're all very interested. The majority of them are interested. And Sunnybrook has a hundred and eighty-seven employees just in Fairfield alone. You know, in southeast Iowa, Sunnybrook has over five hundred employees. And most of them are nurses aides, you know, that are making ten dollars an hour. They have children. They've either not been married or, or they're divorced. But they're, they're good people.
I have a question. So if they're making ten dollars an hour, how can they afford a five, six hundred dollar a month rent? I mean, that's, they have to be.
I think they're saying they're going to help them out. They're going to be making more than ten dollars an hour.
Right.
They're just, they're going to probably cover, increase their wages with a housing subsidy.
That's what we're looking at, trying to do.
That's what they're paying right now for apartments, for a two-bedroom apartment. They're going to pay more than that with utilities. So we're including utilities in their rent. By designing this building the way we are, we'll be able to provide utilities at a low cost to us and pass that along to the employees.
It's heart, it's heart wrenching when you have a single mom come up to you, and they've got three, or two little children, or one. They're the, they're the sole provider, their child, and they come up to you crying because the heat's been cut off because they can't afford to pay it.
You, you have a question?
Yeah. I, I think, you know, when I looked at the map earlier today, I noticed over this parcel of land that's zone R3, it's off of Pleasant Plain, which is a major thoroughfare, in which we're not, we're a dead-end street and a perpendicular street. And it's right before.
But are you suggesting they build the property and not?
Well, no, it's already zoned, yeah, it's already zoned R3.
But you're suggesting. Yeah, but you're suggesting to them that they build a building?
Well, it's off of a major thoroughfare, and I'm sure the homeowners went on, it's already zoned R3, top of Pleasant Plain.
Yeah, but the economics of building a building versus buying this.
One of the things is that that building has been there for a long time. And this is the only viable use. So we either we put apartments and fulfill a need in this community, or that building is all part of it.
There was a gentleman from Mount Pleasant that was just about to buy that property and put it into a nursing home before we bought it.
Right, and, but they didn't build it. That's why we. And they would have built apartments on the property. It was their place.
They, they had, if, if the Mount Pleasant property had gone through, they also had planned on, on adding fourteen apartments to the existing nursing home.
I have a question.
And you want to, and as far as?
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll let it run. It's, it's fine. No, I, I think, you know, we, we're not going to send it back to planning and zoning, so let's make sure we get all the points of view out. But what I'd ask though, so that, because this is being recorded, that anyone who wishes to speak, come up to the microphone, please.
As, as far as looks of the building.
Unless you're going to be answering questions, just don't worry about it.
It's, it's our intention to make the building beautiful and worthy of your neighborhood. You know, the parking lot will be redone. The landscaping will look nice. Because in providing for them, I consider it a reflection on myself. So I want something this extremely nice for them, not something worn down, torn down, new heating, new air conditioning, the whole world.
Thank you, Betty. Next.
I'm wondering if you might come to the microphone.
Can you come to the microphone, please, and identify yourself?
Personally, wondering about the significance of the relationship.
Could you do your name and address, please?
Oh, yes. Matthew Lindberg, where I'm here as a student. And I'm curious about the relationship of the West Taylor location to the middle school and Pence Elementary, how that would factor into the people who use it, neighborhood composition, anything like that. And I'm not sure who would have to do that.
Well, any, any. Children that would be living in that apartment complex with their parent would certainly be going to the Pence Elementary School. And of course, all children of the Fairfield Community School District go to the middle school. So that would be the natural progression of it. There's already children in the neighborhood that go to the Pence School down there. I live in the neighborhood south from there. And my children went to Pence. I'm not sure what your point is on this, other than you think it's going to increase class sizes or?
Just walkability.
Oh, it's, it's very walkable. I mean, you can walk from there to Pence. The, the habits of parents in my age group, a little bit younger, seems to be they'd rather take their children to school and drop them off, rather than have their children walk to school, you know, for whatever fears that they have of that happening. You know, I, when my children were small, I drove them to school, or my wife drove them to school in the morning, and I picked them up in the afternoon.
Okay, does that, does that answer your question about proximity?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, Tracy, would you like to address it?
Sure. Well, Tracy's walking up, Your Honor. I just would say that we felt like that the surrounding amenities were quite appropriate to the development, especially considering the type of development it was going to have, and that many of the occupants of the, that were using the remodeled area would be, you know, it would make it safer for their kids. They would add to the nature of the community in the sense that they were young families as well, some of them.
Yeah, I'm Tracy Vance, Executive Director of the Fairfield Economic Development Association, as you all know. And I want to lend my voice of support for the project. I'm going to limit my remarks because I think we're going to have another hearing, some other, they'll have some more discussion. But obviously, when, when, we do have a housing issue here in, in the city. I think you're all aware of that. We're going to be initiating a housing study, you know, summer. And, and while not trying to be insensitive, because I do think that, that, you know, there is going to be an impact on the community. Now, I may, you know, and I think most of us that have been around this long enough and have been in communities and have developed these things, that the impact may not be quite as great as what some people might fear it will be. But I don't want to be insensitive to that, because there will be obviously more increased traffic on Hyde River than there is now, on West Taylor than there is now. But in terms of looking for reuse for that building, because that's part of what my job is, to help try to find reuse for vacant buildings in, in our community, and help our community grow, really, this is probably about the only reuse for this facility. And so that's one reason why, you know, we looked at it when I was approached by Mr. Cooster. And I also had discussions with the previous, was alluded to, the gentleman from Mount Pleasant, had discussions with him also about the use of the building. So I think, you know, it's something that, you know, I think we should look at. The other thing in place in my mind, too, is that, you know, Mr. Cooster, Ms., Ms. Howell, they have a good track record in this community of building things. And so when they say that they're doing it, the intentions or the reasons they're doing it, I firmly believe that. We look at their properties, the way they take care of them now, they, you know, Sunnybrook has the old hospital, it's been proved, they're putting money into that, and they're dressing it up and making it look nicer and keeping, you know, that in good shape. So, you know, I, I really think that, that, you know, they have a track record, record in the community that, you know, you can rely in terms of what they do in their property. So I'll limit my remarks to that point, because I know we'll have some further discussion later. But unless there's any questions, I'm leaving.
Thank you, Tracy. Anyone else wish to speak while the hearing is still open?
Kari Baby, 1006 South East Street. So the back of my property actually is like part of the parking lot for the employees of the nursing home. And a lot of great points were brought up by everyone, and I also have concern about a vacant building. And, and especially when the poison boxes were being put outside around the building, and I was having dead animals in my yard. I have a small child who just turned seven, and I have a dog. So I, and, but also, I, my concern is I'm a single mom. And I've moved here just over four years ago, got my MBA, and I'm a co-founder in a startup. So money is really, really tight. And so I know what it is like to struggle, but I'm making it. And I chose to move into this neighborhood because it's a quiet street, and I don't have to have my son, sorry, I'm getting emotional. I don't have to raise my son in a subsidized housing environment. And I take it very personally not raising him where there's going to be, he's going to be influenced by his surrounding environment of smoking, language, come and go. And it's very admirable that Sunnybrook wants to put up their single moms in subsidized housing, because those children, you know, I have children, a child too, so I understand. However, if they're living in an environment right now that is filthy, their envi, their home environment is what they make of it, and that's how it's going to, you know, that's going to come with them. They're still not going to take care of their home. They're not going to take care of the property. There is going to be, unfortunately, you know, you can't, you can't weed out who your neighbors are. My main concern is that R3 zoning is going to open up the door for a lot of different types of things in the neighborhood, because you cannot discriminate. Once it's R3, you cannot discriminate against who actually runs. So that is something to consider. And sorry, I got emotional there.
It's okay, Tracy. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? John?
I'd like to give the neighbors an opportunity to meet with Betty and I and Jim Bellah. And I haven't checked this out with them, but does Monday evening, next, a week from tonight work through? And should we do it out at assisted living?
Sure.
At what time? Seven?
Seven, good time.
District, I was, I don't know.
Yeah, I just wanted to announce tonight, and I'll try and do that, but in case I miss somebody. Yeah, that's all.
Okay, thank you, John. So we'll close the public hearing at this time. Council, given the discussion that we've had, and I think, you know, we, we definitely understand, you know, the concern of the neighbor.
I might be confused, I have one question. Is the next council meeting next Monday?
No.
No.
No, we're every two weeks. So the second week, and the public hearing is closed. Public hearing is closed.
Awesome.
So council, you know, we've heard, we've heard from both sides, and I think that the point that Tracy Vance has made really sums up who we're dealing with, that this, this isn't an unknown developer and an unknown entity, and I think deserves our consideration for, for the project that they're proposing. At the same time, many of the neighbors have chosen that neighborhood because of its character, and this would change the character. How much it would change the character, no one knows at this point in time. But, you know, we've heard what the intentions are, and it looks like there'll be a little bit more work between the neighbors and the developer going forward. Is your wish to, to move this forward at this time, or table this second reading until we get results from the community meeting?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we tabled till the next meeting. I'd like to see this meeting take place and hopefully come to a better place between the developers and the neighbors.
So a motion by Voyer, second by Vasquez.
I would say that, yes. I think it's a good idea. I mean, I think it's, it's a good idea so that hopefully, you know, I guess I would just say some feeling of confidence. I mean, and fortunately, I think, John, if you sit down with them and show them, I mean, I think they'll feel better, and I certainly can understand their feelings. I mean, I think any of us would be apprehensive. And so I think it's really important that you take time and work through it with them before we proceed.
You might even want to bring a few of the prospective tenants along with you to the meeting, so they could kind of meet some of the people who might be your neighbors.
Counsel, if I may, Your Honor?
Yeah, we have a motion, a second. This is a discussion period, so go ahead.
You know, as your planning director, I'd just like to throw in a couple of things. How did, how did we get to this position? If I may. And I think the, the big thing to consider here, we had some early comments from myself even, that traffic was going to be fairly benign, be about the same as, as the, you know, the use before. So we've heard from one tenant who did live there when that use was going up, that you would have fifteen cars three times a day coming and going. And, I mean, if we're looking at an apartment complex versus an industrial use like that, we're not counting the big truck traffic as well, supplies and whatnot, and other things, UPS, all the different things that would serve as a much more commercial atmosphere or use. So you're looking here at now maybe potentially nineteen or twenty folks who are going to another elderly home somewhere else in the city, albeit, but their structure of their lives and that traffic flow is similar, very similar, to the others that actually live in the community. Now, I went over there today and really rode around a lot, rode around, back around the back of the house as close as I could get to get good views around the back, the front, the sides. You know, it's a very, it's a very densely developed, albeit, single-family homes, it's a very densely developed, single-family home district. I, you know, if you look at the actual density of the development that we're talking about, and what development are we talking about? Look at the footprint of the building. There is no way, I think the mayor hits it nail on the head, there's no way on a market level, anyone for no more occupants that they can put into that thing is going to make an institutional use out of it again, because of course, the market wouldn't bear the money. You wouldn't make enough money to cover your costs in doing so. Antiquated facility, not appropriate, even that service anymore. This is really the only thing that could happen with it. Flip that coin over. Is a single-family owner ever going to buy that lot and have to pay them out to demolish that building, and then build a single-family home there? And that is a developed neighborhood. I'm talking like a planner. This is cold and calculated talk because it's a planner kind of approach. They won't do that. So we know that really the only use we're going to get out of this is probably going to be some limited, and nineteen is very limited, multifamily development. And now we're hearing it's actually going to be nurses working in a facility just like the one that this thing used to be, many of them being young mothers, family-oriented people who are going to be living around other people who obviously are very family-oriented, and that's good for everybody. I think the, you know, there again, the traffic, we're talking about three-hundred-foot roughly distance, or, you know, three-fifty a block, and there's a stop sign. There's a cul-de-sac at the other end. There is no through traffic we're talking about. So there's a relatively limited amount of time to build speed with a vehicle, much less to make it a dangerous congested environment where there might be, you know, accidents resulting from the fact that development is there. So a lot of different concerns from a planning level, but none of them, not a single one, pointing to this is a bad rezoning concept. Yes, it's an R3 in an, in a, in a otherwise single-family environment. It's a very, again, very densely developed, small lot, single-family environment. It was there before, and it was what it was. Now it's impossible to make anything differently. As a planner, you don't know where to go with that, other than to go with the rezoning, because otherwise you risk a building running into black for obvious reasons, a lack of marketability, and that is to no good purpose for anybody in the community. So that's kind of how we got to where we are with the rezoning from a, from a purely planning perspective. Nothing said no.
Thank you, Counsel.
Just one question. The area in question that's going to be R3 is just this property, correct?
Yes, it is.
So I, I think people were alluding to the fact that we're creating a R3 district. It's just a specific use for this property, not changing anything else in the area.
Yes.
That doesn't include the empty lot that's north of the building, is that correct? John, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, it's just that lot. And, you know, the amount of traffic we're talking about, I didn't touch on that a second ago, cars parking thirty-five, that, that parking lot, thirty, thirty-five spots would, you know, it suffices for that. It's a number, but.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion, counsel?
Yeah, I'm just very.
Yeah, I'm just, um, very grateful that you're holding this meeting privately. Thank you for sparing, uh, spend on a prolonged committee meeting. But I was gonna suggest, if you hadn't put this out, the property committee, look at this, because there are a lot of concerns. I didn't get a chance to thoroughly read these letters, but as I approved them, I guess I could divide some of the concerns into what I would call valid and, and maybe invalid. Traffic volume increase, that's valid. Property value decrease, it's probably gonna go the other way. If you have a dilapidated building that's housing rodents right now, and if somebody comes in and puts a million dollars into that building and people live there, your property value most likely go up as a result. But it is worth taking the time and slowing this process down, and it's unfortunate that not everyone got a letter about the rezoning. Uh, it's a little mishap, wasn't intentional, but it's good that we're slowing this down, take a better look at it, and let everyone get all of their questions answered. There will still be some unknowns. We don't know what will be down the road if this happens, but we can know what the intentions of the, the developers are. And as I'd said, they're local people, they're good people, they run a good business to Sunnybrook. And, um, I have a good feeling about it, but at the same time, I wanna make sure everyone in the neighborhood gets, just keep their mind and get those questions answered.
I had just one more point to add also, but I think there's a lot of uses for subsidized housing. And the fact that Sunnybrook is willing to, you know, quote-unquote subsidize some of the rent for, for their employees, doesn't mean it's subsidized housing. I mean, basically, that is an increase of their, their compensation to their employees. And so it's, it's, it's not what ordinarily you would consider subsidized housing. So, anyway, just, to me, that, that's admirable. I, uh, you know, I, I think it's, uh, anyway, I, that's all. I think it's admirable.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I've received a couple of emails concerning this, and one of the things in the emails that I received was, there was concern that, uh, we know that we have sanitary sewer problems all throughout the city, and one of the concerns was that if this was converted into an apartment complex, that that would overwhelm the sewer system in that area, and that is not the case. The sewer in that area is adequate. There was one sanitary sewer overflow that was reported out there in the past. Uh, I didn't, I'm not sure whether it overflowed during this last large rain event that we just went through, but I know that we experienced an overwhelmingly amount of locations that overflowed because of this rain. But to add nineteen apartments, twenty-four apartments, or whatever, it's not going to overwhelm the sewer system that's in the neighborhood, and you're not going to experience backups in your homes or anything like that, because this is coming in. So, that was the one point that I wanted to make, because that is some misinformation that's going around, and, and it's unfounded.
Thank you. Counsel, anything else? And then, enter a motion to table the second reading for the rezoning of 809 West Taylor.
We have a motion.
We have a motion, a second, that's right. So, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion, and we look forward to the hearing, the results from your, uh, meeting. We will likely have this on our agenda for our first meeting in April, or we will begin in May, but we will resume the second reading, uh, so we invite you all back at that time.
May thirteenth, yeah.
Next, counsel, we will, uh, send the second reading for ordinance eleven oh one, which is located in City Rightway. Uh, this is at the, uh, North Penn Street. And, uh, again, uh, this, this also, we'll open the public hearing at this time, so anyone that wishes to speak to the vacation of this, if not, close the public hearing. And I might recommend also that we get this off our desk too, counsel, and suspend rules on this forward since, uh, all the property owners are.
I would like to make one comment.
Sure.
Kevin told me that they went through the one call process to identify utilities that are out in the area, and there are none in the areas that are being located. So, I think it'd be prudent to go ahead and suspend the rules to move this from the second to the third, the final reading.
Okay. Motion by Hamilton, suspend the rules. Second by Revolinsky, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And I will take up the ordinance then for its third, final reading.
I would move it from the third to the final.
Motion by Hamilton to approve. Second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? Not if it's called a roll.
Can we get Travis with the lobby?
Hamilton.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin.
Yes.
Howley.
Yes.
Boyer.
Yes.
Kamis.
Yes.
Revolinsky.
Yes.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I would request that we table the next time.
We'll be tabling our wastewater amendment. It's not prepared at this time. Uh, Kev, why don't you continue? Our next two action items are, involve, uh, comprehensive plan and zoning code, and your interest in pursuing, uh, RFQ and RFP for those elements.
I would like to, uh, present this to counsel tonight for an action consideration. We've been talking about it a little bit here and there. I think we've had several illustrations of what for us would be an extreme utility to engaging in these activities, uh, now and going forward. And I guess we're just proposing to counsel tonight that in the least, that we go out and we, uh, RFP for these particular services and, or RFQ to the counsel's preference, but we try to, basically, I like an RFP for this, because we know, uh, most of the people in the, in the state that consult and do these kind of things, and we'd like to get a price for these, a specific, a little more specificity than just a qualifications request. We'd like to get a price on the, uh, doing a comprehensive plan, the effort with the city, as well as a new zoning code. Uh, we could have those RFPs out in a week or so, and, uh, if we were to do that, we'd be able to get some good responses. I would assume that it would be okay with members, if we agreed to do this, that I could email those out, uh, and just kinda let people look at them through email, and let me know if there's any issues. We can go ahead and send those out in the next week or so and get busy.
I have two questions. With RFQ?
An RFP would be a, a request for a proposal, which typically.
Qualifications.
Yeah. And RFQ is a.
Whoever requests a qualification.
Yeah, and we're doing that, of course, you know, we're doing that with the, the rec center effort, because we wanted to see some qualifying efforts prior from some of those folks. Usually in the consulting world, something a little bit more complicated perhaps, or with, with rec specificity, you might go with an RFQ, kinda see the qualifications and the performance of the people in their past effort.
So, um, I presume it's not gonna come cheap to hire someone to help us through this comprehensive plan? And so I, are, are we thinking that this will go in our next budget cycle, since our comprehensive plan ends in the two, two thousand and fifteen? Are we, are, or, I mean, what did you have thought on it?
Actually, I was hoping that if we were to agree to go forward this, we would get RFPs back, and we'd look at those costs and, um, see what we felt about them at the time, but that we would qua, if we agreed that going further was something we wanted to go ahead and do, I think we could go ahead and do that, and with some of our financial, some of our fiscal exchanges that we're about to do before the end of the fiscal year, when we're looking at our vacant policy and some of the other moves that we'd like to make, that we could consider holding out the amount of money, maybe amending this year to get started, or get started shortly after the new fiscal year and amend that year for the effort. But either way, that we go ahead and get started in the sense that we're trying to get, kinda dig back into complication effort that was underway, uh, prior to my getting here. Um, and, and sort of coordinate that with the comp plan and the rezoning, so we're, we're just kinda messing with code literally for about eighteen to twenty-four months on all these things, bringing them to fruition at about the same time.
Was it in the budget prior?
Uh, no, these two were not in the budget, weren't being really discussed, or may have been being discussed before I got here, but they weren't put into the budget prior.
It was discussed, re-complification was discussed.
Oh, yeah. That was, actually, yes. We have engaged.
They weren't in the budget, you're saying?
No. We have engaged with an entity about concerning re-complification effort, and I've been talking to them, of course. We'd kinda put it on hold for a little bit, so we could address some of this other stuff and kinda get our organizational feet beneath us, but, um, I would, you know, healthily estimate that the cost of both these efforts would be about a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, both of them. But you're gonna get a comp plan, hopefully, our region, uh, our area fifteen will engage in that bidding. You know, your regions or our areas will typically do a little bit, uh, on a better deal, but conservatively, you're looking at about twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars, uh, on the really low end of it for a comp plan, but, uh, zoning code, you're looking around seventy thousand dollars. So.
I would move that we put out a, a, a RFP.
Can we do those as a.
Yeah, I would say so. For both.
For both.
And then, yeah. An idea, what, what's, what's the aim to us and how much we need?
That's what we're doing, at least getting an idea. We may move forward, may not, it's up to counsel at the time. We could just examine what we could get. Turn.
I would say, the other one's motion.
Okay, motion by Revolinsky, second by Hamilton. Question I have, and that's, I think, kind of a long line where Connie and John are pursuing, is that, um, if we deem that, uh, this isn't the time, summer, fall, to begin a process like this, are these RFPs going to be valid for next year's budget? Um, is, is this really the time? Be, be going after them, or can you, can we ask the same companies to update their R, or how long, how long will their price be good?
Good more. The RFPs will literally be good for probably about a ninety-day period, ninety to a hundred and twenty days. If somebody's really nice, a hundred and twenty, usually ninety. But it gives us an idea of cost to consider when we decide. Or the not, we shouldn't move forward into it.
For the next budget process, gives us a long.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or discussion, counsel?
Well, in, um, property committee, uh, actually, Public Safety Commission, we've been running up against a lot of zoning issues lately, and I think this is a good time to look at that. And the code is a mess, my understanding, it's, um, contradicts itself in several places, and it's not, uh, easy to read by any means to the public, so that's why our former city administrator really wanted to get down and get that cleaned up.
Well, and he also wanted to try to do that more in-house with the council people, assigning us each certain sections of the code to read, review, and, and, um, try to, try to find these things for ourselves.
Darren's volunteering himself for that task.
Major work. I worked on some of that.
It's, it's a pretty arduous involvement, though. I mean, this is.
You almost need to speak legalese to figure out.
A leap off a cliff, more so than a dip in the water, I think.
That's very modern. You need to be a Philadelphia lawyer.
Some of it is updating language that's already there too, so it's maybe not as hard. But anyway, uh, we have a motion, a second, to, um, put out the comprehensive plan on zoning code for, uh, RFP. Please call the roll.
Revolinsky.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Howley.
Yes.
Boyer.
Yes.
Kamis.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Um, I have nothing in my report. Kevin, anything additionally, uh, actually, city attorney, nothing to report there. Uh, committee reports, public safety and transportation, I just got a note that in the notes from four fifteen, that was a discussion that we dealt with this evening, um, for the, uh, the parking change, and, uh, four eighteen, you had two items. If you could talk about those, it, I know there's recommended action on that, but, um, for action items, I'd rather see them on the agenda than, than in the notes. So, please give us some background, and if there's something wrong, move on, we can get on the next agenda.
I'm gonna let Kevin talk about the trail light.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that, counsel. Um, well, uh, this all started off when we were in our CTG grant meetings early on. CTG is the Community Transformation Grant. This grant is administered with our local county health department. And we established a, um, ad hoc, I would call it, board amongst us, who would look at the distribution of these funds and the activities that they would pay for. And, uh, we, early on, we settled on, um, a few of different initiatives that kinda fit. Bicycle racks was one of those things at various places in the city. Painting, uh, crosswalks, the CTG, Community Transformation, the transformation they're speaking about is pedestrian-friendly transformation. Making your community more friendly, more open to pedestrian traffic in normal, uh, everyday life, almost kind of in line with what we're doing with the Blue Zone, um, activities that we've been pushing for. So, uh, within that spirit, we're looking at crosswalks, um, doing some changes to our crosswalks, in a, from a lighting perspective, some of our major ones, HAVI, Walmart, uh, which the Walmart version has crashed in our discussions of our TIF, uh, notions out there, uh, adjacent to Walmart, but we centered on trail crossings, and all our trail crossings, I think our original goal was, most of all our trail crossings would include, um, uh, safety lighting, flashing lights for safety, caution lights, uh, at those crossings. And so we did initiate that, and we, and I know you've seen them around town at different crossings. One such, uh, flashing light was, uh, put out at Deer Avenue, um, directly across, uh, the, the street from one, John McGuire's home.
Twelfth Street.
Deer and Twelve, yeah.
Deer and Twelve.
Yeah, and, and John has significant issue with light, uh, almost virtually from the beginning, and he felt a little bit annoyed by it, I think off the bat. I think that annoyance grew into what, developed into a, a major issue with it, because it was, he felt lowering his quality of, of life, the standard of his quality of life. So, um, we started pursuing different ideas. At first, I was pursuing different ideas with the CTG board to see if we could get grant funds that would buy another light to buy one there, and then we could switch those lights and have something there that maybe had a motion sensor on it, or a push-button, you know, a, a different concept of, of safety. A lot of discussions have ensued since the beginning, um, that range from, you know, aspects of the city's liability, since we did establish safety measures there, removing all safety measures did not seem like a very prudent thing for us to do. In our subcommittee meeting, we got into even more specific language about what would be appropriate. We happened to have someone with the DOT who was at that meeting and was, was speaking a great deal about it. He was ignoring.
Yeah.
But, you know, there, what is appropriate at the, at the intersection? There's, it's a T-bone stop sign. Twenty-five miles an hour this way, people are coming out of the city. The other way, really, to us, seemed to be the more dangerous way, because you're coming from literally kind of out of the peripheral of the city, into the main part of the city, so you're coming, you know, your speed is gonna be naturally a little greater there. But regardless, um, the statement I'm hearing basically from the CTG, um, is that if, if it's going to be removed in place somewhere else in the city, we'll need to basically buy another light to do that replacement. The CTG paid for the original light, and of course, that was, that will obviously still be the case, we'll employ that light at a different location that is more appropriate for twenty-four, seven blinking.
Right.
Perhaps more rural, um, and.
What about just not putting one there?
Well.
Turning it off.
Um, the suggestion of our DOT representative was, um, that we.
And I'm really not sure.
Was, a good suggestion, I thought. No, no doubt, no, we're getting you out of trouble. A good suggestion was signage, more appropriate, warning signage, because of the literal, low amount of, of volume of traffic at the, at the area. And, uh, we had a pretty healthy discussion about that, and that that might be the solution that we have, because we can't leave one light blinking. Uh, myself, personally, I think leaving the light blinking on the other way would be very good, because the traffic is against the law.
My point is, we're not bound by law to have these up. This is, this is an increased safety measure, and if it's intrusive to the neighborhood, then we should just move on.
But we are bound by law in the sense that we can't have one in one direction flashing, must have both.
So. And that's, that's where the discussion has to be held with the county, as far as the opposite side, the sign is concerned, because that is out in the county. The, uh, the crosswalk itself, since the traffic volume is extremely low out there, even the, the traffic comes into town from that at least at forty-five mile an hour, there should be an advanced warning sign up for it. But a motion sensor, you have the lights flashing all the time, because there's animals out there, deer, raccoons, whatever, would move and.
All right, so this, is your committee gonna be taking this up again, or Kevin, is it gonna resolve this with, uh, the CTG?
I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna talk to CTG about it, and we're gonna decide where everyone thinks is that most appropriate rural location to move the sign to, assuming that we are going to move it. It would be my recommendation to council that we do move it, and that we use more appropriate measures there, which I feel would also include signage.
Connie wasn't able to be at our meeting. It was just Mike and I, and so we couldn't come to a quorum, so we decided to bring it to council for consideration.
And just, just for record, I'm agreeing with Kevin. I think we should move the light. They're nice if they are not bothering any neighbors, I guess, because it's extra safety. But if it's bothering a neighbor, I think it's, you know, we should sign on that area. But, you know, signage, you know, just whatever, caution sign or whatever is appropriate before the intersection, and probably at the intersection of the most appropriate light, without light.
Yeah. I think, Your Honor, if there is, that we are, we're not operating under a mandate here. We're operating with the goal. And I feel like we're not operating under a mandate, to your point, that, wow, we shouldn't let our goal, if it's not for the greater good kind of thing, I don't think we should let our goal depend on someone's quality of life to a greater, we're not having more than one. Property owner from that area say they did feel that way.
All right. Very good. So, I'd say go ahead and resolve that with the CTG, and if we can get signage in that in place, we'll look at that.
And the city will purchase that signage on the same year?
Yes.
Yes. I didn't want to say that, Mark.
They charge the owner on signage. Unless the grant will pay for the signage.
I dare not ask you, hon.
I would ask.
I will ask.
And then Jessica, the other recommendation, and it's for closure of...
From Maine to Second, from Hempstead, from Maine to Second on the twenty-seventh of April, from four to seven, or I'm sorry, two PM to ten PM.
July?
April.
Or is it...
Yeah.
Okay, so that is...
Do you think action?
It's a pool and...
Carnival.
...fundraiser.
Carnival.
Is that pronounced there?
Carnival.
Carnival, sorry.
And they have plans actually for four to seven, but...
Well, so that is timely, when you have it included in our agenda items, an entertaining motion then to approve the closure of Hempstead between Maine and Second on April twenty-seventh. And what are the hours again?
From two PM to ten PM.
Two PM to ten PM.
I'll make a motion.
Second motion. Motion by Ledger Kaelin, second by Hallie. Any other questions or discussion? Not all those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Thank you. Next, Economic Development Committee, is there a report? Or just your notes, Connie?
Just my notes.
Just your notes, okay.
Oh, my God, no, can't remember.
That's fine. All right. Sometimes I'm confused whether we actually have, have them on the agenda, or whether they're just for...
Yeah. We didn't really have any action. Tony Camaro did present the community calendar, central community calendar concept. You know, we didn't see any downside to it, and we just asked that the city departments take a look at it. Hopefully Kevin can coordinate that, and if they find it useful, then great. Very small cost.
Yeah. I also, you know, because if it's, if it's going to be a true community calendar, I'd like to see Jessica Camaro do some work also with the other organizations that already are providing a lot of information.
Sure.
See if they will include centralizing.
Yeah. I mean, we did talk about, yeah, we did talk about the...
We've got another one, and it's for a private venture. I think it's, I love the concept. It was in our strategic plan ten years ago. If it's gonna be done, it needs to be done right, and it needs to be managed even better.
And we did talk about the challenges of why it's not worked in the past, and he's got those challenges to overcome.
Yeah.
So...
Okay. Thanks very much. Next, we'll move on to our city administrative report. Kevin, I know you had a meeting with the ambulance committee. Martha, our representative, joint meeting, so if you can bring us up to speed on that.
Well, it was a very, I think it was a very heated discussion regarding...
But give us the, what's the baseline issue here, Martha? I understand that...
Well, one of the basic issues, or one of the problems that we have is, as the representative from the council, you know, the city, the council, is not providing any funding. So, it's like, why am I there? That was sort of like, that's kind of what happened to me. And after Kevin left me, it really, it got really even worse. I mean, because it's like...
Now, our history is that we're in a twenty-eight agreement with the county and with the health center. And we have provided funds in the past, limited amount of funds. And I know at one point, we were doing a lot of, we were doing those funds out of local auction sales tax. Prior to that, I think they were somewhere in the general fund, but they were in the amount of maybe two thousand dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars a year, something like that. So, we don't have a history of really sharing the burden of these costs, but I think the discussion that you're having right now is that the three entities are trying to come up with the right formula to keep a vital ambulance service operating in Jefferson County.
Because they're really, obviously, we have two ambulances at the present time that are in, I guess I would say, good condition, fair condition, fair to good. We have one ambulance, the third one, that obviously is needing to be replaced very badly. And there's a lot of, I think, infighting between the private provider that we had at one time, and now the current contract, which we have with Midwest Ambulance. And since we do have a contract, which we assigned, the Midwest ambulance is the provider. And the difficulty is, as I say, we are at the point where, obviously, the third ambulance very badly needs replacing, because at the time that there was the accident over in Metegia, two of our ambulances were dispatched, and in the meantime, there was a need for a third ambulance, which was not operable. So, thus, a private car had to actually take patients. And so, then it becomes, you know, a very difficult situation. So, I mean, basically, what's happening is, needless to say, there is definitely a need for some funding. I guess, you know, Kevin heard it, I heard it, I heard it. As I say, even after Kevin left me, in, you know, no uncertain terms.
You know, I, after the meeting, I'm assuming this is after the meeting?
Yes, it was.
Because I was just thinking steak and potato after the meeting. I knew the wife was at home, and I couldn't, I had to leave. But, in a hurry. But, there are so many issues that were brought up at this meeting. As they say back home, there's more issues than you can shake a stick at with our ambulance service, guys. There are significant, serious issues. I'm not talking about what is the quality of the service. I don't know. I'm not daily involved in the ambulance delivery of service. I hear a lot of things over here, I hear a lot of things over there. It's a very reputable company providing our service. This is an effort by that company, quite frankly, to grow itself, because it was in two small communities, now it wants to be in a third small community. It's a, it's a very decent business plan, I think. I think the people who run the company have an extreme amount of acumen concerning this business. However, and I think it's a point that, of course, it's a point I'm bringing forward in these meetings, but it is a point that where there were multiple, I believe, election officials on not just one or two sides there that agree, that it maybe, it's not what we're doing, but how we're doing it. There's a public model, and there's a private model. And the question now is, since the conversation in the beginning was leaving one carrier, because we had a bigger, larger, in the bids process, I mean, a bigger, larger corporate carrier, who could make the public, or the private model work? All right? You hear this conversation a lot, and small company can't. Sometimes it's more appropriate, less overhead, small companies. Sometimes it's more appropriate, huge company, maybe large overhead, but huge company capable of spreading the costs over a larger economy scale within itself to provide the service. Right? Well, I think at this point, there's serious doubt whether or not that is actually the situation that we're in, or whether or not that's actually even true, at least in this case, with ambulance service in a community of ten thousand people. Because we are not only in a similar situation, we are in the same situation, except for it has been exacerbated, and there's now more money that we're looking at coming up short. We were looking at stopping, I don't want to be exact figures, it was less than ten thousand before, I know. Now, it's...
Thirty-five thousand.
Well, that was one. Including the ambulance, we're talking about sixty thousand dollars. Because there's an ambulance payment in there, right? We're gonna pro forma that out over a period of five to six years. All three ambulances, quite frankly, have a lot of miles on them. Some of them are in pretty good shape on a fiscal...
Sixty a year.
A sixty thousand dollar gap next year, roughly fifty to sixty thousand dollar gap is looking like, with the ambulance cost in there. Without the ambulance cost, we're looking at a thirty-five thousand dollar operational red gap for next fiscal year, beginning in July one. So, we have a little time to engage in some conversations. Now, I had approached some representatives of the hospital about having joint board meetings. That wasn't deemed to be the perfect form or way of tackling this, so we had this smaller meeting with a few representatives in there. Other council members were there as well, and saw what happened. But I think there's a decent, serious question now, is whether or not the public model is the model or not, because, you know, given one...
The private model or the public model?
The public model. For a community this size, and given the dynamics that we have, growing, there's a growing, I don't wanna say job space, but I mean, we have a growing amount of seniors, so literally, the service, the provision of service willing priest going forward, I think is significantly. We have changes in Obamacare, which, albeit, less money are coming from individual people. We're talking about cutting a few pennies from individual people. This is the basis of this care law, which was drawn into question the other night at this meeting. I found that to be a little bit funny, I mean, literally. But the basis of it is, people pay a little bit less a piece, but you're bringing all the people into this thing, much more insured people. So, people who are paying nothing are going to be paying something. And people who are paying something are going to be paying a little bit less. But overall, your economy of scale will have more money coming in for the service. This is a fact. This is not something we can question. And so, I think it's dubious.
Claims of whether or not it would work on a public level, because it would.
And this is the claim at the meeting from one hospital representative, was that literally it would bankrupt the economy of the hospital. Two million dollars in overall profit last year. I am not sitting here saying it's not important for them to make up profit, quote, right? You're a public entity, but you have to make more money than it costs to run it. We have to with our utilities. And literally, this is a health utility service, isn't it? So, it is important that they make money per year. But I'm not even counting funded depreciation in that number. Funded depreciation is likely another million and a half. I don't know, I haven't seen the audit, but it's significant money, I assure you. So, I hardly think that thirty-five thousand dollars, I said this in the meeting, threatens the economy of the hospital. Because I know that there were two other elected officials who were there, who felt similarly about the hospital, quote, taking on this service. They are a medical municipality, they're the only one we have. There was one hospital representative who looked at city representatives and said, "Well, perhaps you could take it on by yourself, since you're out building gyms and gallivanting around." I think that's the point of it. Gallivanting, I'm adding, perfect. It was said in a manner that, hey, you're building gyms, take it over yourself. To which the city responded, basically, citizens may move to help construct this facility with huge donations. They came to the city, city figured that felt it was part of mission.
It's not a question that really deserves an answer.
It's not.
Where is, where are we headed?
At this point, I, I'm having to meet once again on the ninth of May with the hospital and with the, you know, representative from the board of supervisors. And I would say, at this point, you know, we either almost have to withdraw, or else come up with some funding. I mean, they are of that thought. I mean, I don't think we're running out of any choice. We really don't.
On a level of what we do, whatever we do, must be more effective and more mature than what we've been doing. Because right now, I don't know anyone who has a copy of this twenty-eighty agreement that is signed by all respective entities, guys. There's one of the hospital's signature, but I haven't seen one. I'm looking still.
Did you get the copy that Nanette sent? Because I have copy, yes.
Yes.
I thought she sent it to me.
And it's not.
No. Because it was given to Steve Bergmeier, and he didn't have anyone sign it.
Well, and so, on an organizational level, you know, and the bylaws at some point, it was brought up at the meeting about parity. The bylaws could, were set up to be changed, able to be changed by a simple motion of the board. So, at some point or other, we ended up with, you know, inequity in membership. You've got two people from the hospital on the board, one ex officio member voting, which personally, on a personal level, and usually, you don't see ex officio members voting. And then there's two other members, it's a tie board. We did almost end up with a tie once since I've been here, which is completely out of the way. But we've got major structural issues.
We really have to do some serious...
Let me just ask, because I wanted to bring this before the council tonight, you know, going forward, and there isn't really, isn't anything on the table, I understand that, there isn't a proposal from either side at this point, so we don't know where it's going. But in general, hearing what you've heard, what do you feel the city's position is in terms of responsibility for that type of service, or helping to provide that service to the community?
That's a question I wanted to ask. Are we responsible for this service? I know, you know, there are certain services, fire, police.
John?
John, can you help me? Because I need a big picture view.
I'd really like to talk about this, because we have lawsuit for a week in May of two thousand and eleven, just exactly about this. And I'll take you back to John Brown, two thousand and one, two thousand and five, with small wars with the county, and the hospital board. And basically, he didn't care if we pulled out, because the twenty-eighty agreement, as you described, was kind of hard to really put your hands on it. It did surface during the lawsuit last May, and it was an exhibit, so I'll get everybody what the exhibit looked like.
Had we signed it?
Pardon?
Had we signed it?
Have we signed it?
Had we signed it, the copy you saw?
You know, at this point, I believe everybody signed it, because it had to be recorded with the secretary of state. But as soon as I look at it tomorrow, I'll probably say, well, I...
We likely did sign it.
Yeah. The point is that we, at times in the past, have leveraged by saying, we don't have to be in this. And that is true. And we usually got by, as you said, with two, three thousand dollars a year. The most we ever put in was ten thousand dollars. And, or the Sally Port at the old law center is storage. And there's a reason for that that doesn't get talked about much. We had Scott Rennecker one time run the figures for us. Two-thirds of the levy that is raised under the Iowa code for the ambulance, and subsidizes the ambulance each year, is paid by the citizens of Fairfield Taxes. So, it isn't like we're not putting money in. Don't misunderstand that.
Good point, John.
The rest of it, though, is, in the past, and I've been around the ambulance agreements since I moved to Fairfield in the seventies. During the seventies and the eighties, the reason we could have two nice ambulances was something called revenue sharing. And we had basically free ambulances, courtesy of Jimmy Carter, Rodney Reagan, David Stockman, those guys in politics that sent federal money back here. When the ambulance service agreements started running into trouble was when the ambulances that were bought with revenue sharing in the seventies and eighties, they became trade-ins for the ambulance in the nineties. And that was the last time that you saw ambulances that were bought and paid for all of the sudden with a block of money that nobody questioned. After that, it was either the private provider, I know one private provider that basically got out of the ambulance business, because all of a sudden, buying ambulances was in his face. And at that point, it became a public question about who's gonna buy it. Well, the ambulance fund always has a reserve of board supervisors, and if you go over and look in the auditor's office, it's somewhere between twenty-five and fifty thousand dollars a year. That's also used for other things. If the subsidy isn't enough, there've been a couple times when we've paid something extra on covering the gap in the subsidy and so forth. But the problem has been that provider by provider, up through the time we had a suit for two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars against the twenty-eighty group, there was always the county putting some money over in the reserve and budgeting some for ambulance. The county spends the levy to provide the subsidy for the contractor, and then the hospital provides part of, I guess I'd call it the servicing of this, their part of everything that happens with an ambulance, always because it's emergency. Twice, the county hospital has tried to provide the service itself. When Doug, I can't remember his last name, was here in two thousand and one, he tried to put together a bid for it. And in two thousand and five, when we were in the process of getting into litigation, and we canceled the contract with the prior provider, they were looking at it again as far as one of three potential bids for the services. They didn't go there either time. But I don't know that it would bankrupt the hospital to do the things that they were talking about, Kevin. But they didn't rush to do it, and there's a lot going on in mixing the private service fees that you collect with the subsidy and making and outgoing concern. And it hasn't worked with a small operator, and it hasn't worked with a bigger operator. The operator that sued us, at one time, had four different operations, Des Moines and here, Knoxville, and Oskaloosa, I believe. here, Knoxville, and Oskaloosa, I believe, and we thought that's an abundance of ability to provide services and enough size, but when we were in the lawsuit, he was saying he lost $280,000. And we didn't believe that, and the district court didn't believe that either, but he still said it, and he came in with the county that said the figures could be played that way. So what we're looking at now, I think, whether it's $35,000, or whether it's $10,000, or whether it's $2,000 or $3,000, we don't have any history of giving them anything. And for the most part, it's because in the past, we all took a very staunch position that you already get two-thirds of your subsidy from us, and that's the biggest single figure in your ambulance budget.
What is that figure, John?
I believe it's somewhere between $150,000 and $180,000 a year, am I right, Martha?
I think so.
All right. It depends on what...
And of course, it was very interesting, because then I was provided with a total record for the last month, I think, or maybe six weeks, of the number of calls, and the number of calls that were within the city's limits of Fairfield, you know, in other words, trying once again to say, you know, our business, you know, the city of Fairfield is the one that really is using the ambulance a lot, everywhere.
And that's true, and that's why we should be the biggest part of the subsidy.
You may help us, but in the same token, you're really using us more than anyone else.
The thing is, the whole thing is...
So I didn't get any help.
We established the... It's been packaged as a break-even service, that was the goal in the past, and that's what the levy was for.
It's not anymore.
No, I understand.
And that's, that goes...
It's a per, yeah, it's a per capita basis, though, I just, I don't know if that's accurate.
Well, I mean, the one statement the other day that I thought was, and we got into a good, it was a little rough at the beginning, but we got into a good business discussion of it, and it was, okay, the amount of the subsidy, virtually, the subsidy, you're paying, the ambulance board is paying the subsidy to a company, a private company, in order that they make profit. That's how simple it is. That is how simple it is. Somewhere in there, they're losing money to the extent that this subsidy will guarantee a modicum of profit is made, otherwise what? I'm a business, it's not worth it if I'm not making money. So either we are erroneous in assuming, because I don't know, we are erroneous in assuming that the amount of profit that is made is great enough over, that that would make the difference if you did it publicly, with paying the amount of the benefits for those employees, those public now employees, or it's making no money.
We had 10 years of accountings on the last two operators in the suit that was filed in 2005, and was settled, wasn't settled, it was decided by the court in 2011, the legislature in 2012, excuse me. But in that time, about half of the time, it was operating at a problem. So it can be done. There were actually a couple years when not all the subsidy was used, that sort of surprised everybody when the accountant justified that, but it worked that way. The problem is that you don't know from year to year that there's going to be something else that happens with Medicare, you don't know from year to year that there's going to be something go wrong with the employment arrangement inside the provider's business. That happened twice with one operator having a problem each. And so there's things that, they're really not the foreseeable you can get into, but at no time did they lose in a particular year a six-figure amount.
Thanks, John, that was very helpful. I gotta wrap this discussion up. Kevin, I'll just ask, and Martha, is there anything that you want from the council at this point in time, or are you just gonna keep negotiating the best possible?
I guess. One thing I would almost ask from the council is, you know, what decision we proceed with in terms of staying as a part of, you know, I mean, do we continue...
They're going to receive the subsidy either way.
I mean...
That's my question, is, what's the benefit of us giving our property tax money, our city property tax money towards this when it's already, we're already contributing through the levy? What are we getting? Are we getting better service for our citizens? Is that what we're getting?
That's exactly right. We are talking, if we stay in the board of this thing, and we give the subsidy, we're talking about one, two, three taxing entities taxing the same citizen in order to give money to a private company so they can make money. That's what we're talking about.
So the question is...
But I guess what I'm asking is, you know, do we withdraw from 2080, or do we, I mean...
What's the benefit of staying in? I guess that's the question, if anyone has an answer. I'm not seeing much right now.
The, one thing is, if you, if we get out and the other two entities are still involved in it, and, you know, of course, what these other two entities are gonna say, they're gonna look at you and go, "Hey, you know, we're in there for the community, and the city's not willing to be a part," albeit, the customer base is in the city, and they are being a part of it, there's no way to...
Well, it's also, there are more than just the economics that are discussed within the, within the 20-80 agreement. I think it's good to be at the table, because...
I hate to go against the phrase of Dan Light. I really do.
Aside from our reputation, I mean, being at the table does give us a say in some of the management of this.
There is more than one community in this state right now, having just built a new ambulance, or a new hotel, a new, a new hospital, that are doing it themselves without any assistance from either the county or the city. I just left one. Brand new hospital. I bet you it's probably about the same amount of hours' cost. No subsidies, no 20-80. Hospital bringing hospital's customer to hospital.
You mean, they don't have a tax duty for ambulance?
They, oh, it's a public, it's very, the same, it's a public hospital.
They just do it based on that.
It's a public hospital, but a part of that public hospital's operations is ambulance service.
Well, we don't know what happened to your budget.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Anyway, so I would say that you're probably not getting a recommendation to withdraw from 2080, 2080, but just to continue to negotiate with fate, if there are any specific proposals that come out of the meetings, then we'll bring them back to council.
Obviously, I will be coming back and asking for some kind of funding, I can see that coming right now.
Okay. All right, thank you, Martha, thank you, Kevin. This time, council, we have on our agenda closed session, that would be in accordance with Iowa Code Section 21.5L, which is a discussion of real estate transactions, so entertaining motion to go into closed session.
Your Honor, if I could, I would like for Carl to give us a short update, if that would be possible, I almost forgot it.
I'll bring it up.
Sure, good, we'll take one second.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you, sir.
I'm from Towne, the general, from Towne Water Plant, and I just wanted to let everyone know...
Put your address, sir.
...through Penn Street. Just wanted to let everyone know, due to some prior concerns, I haven't gotten hurt, I'll be back, yeah, but I call lab, and we have no estrogen or compliance thereof in our drinking water, or horse water.
Okay, so that's in the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Carl.
Okay, motion by Hamilton, Hamilton to move on second by Judge Ledger Kalin. All those in favor, city, I say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Thank you all for attending the meeting.